Good evening. The Finance and Law Subcommittee shall come to order today, Wednesday, June 5th. Roll call, Mrs. Shaws?
Present.
Mr. Viera?
Present.
Chairman DeMello, present. First up, we have use of facilities. See attached memo. And, Mrs. Monahan?
The use of facility is for the upcoming June 7th and June 8th at the high school auditorium. And the organization is for bar dance studio. Again, all the items there which have been charged to them.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next up, we have facilities update. See attached memo. Back to you, Mrs. Monahan?
As we do every month, Director of Facilities Mark Freitas provides us open work orders and closed work orders per school. And if you do look at the chart, you can see that out of the 59 buildings, the total work orders is 2,294 work orders in the entire city. But 77% of those work orders are from the school department. There are closed work orders of over 2,000 closed work orders and 249 open work orders.
Thank you. Just a question. I know we're encapsulating all the buildings within the city of Taunton, 59 total. Why do we compare that?
Net school spending.
For the net school spending?
We get 75% of the building power.
Okay.
Just to ensure we're getting 75% of their time to the financial issues.
Gotcha. All right, wonderful. Thank you. Do we need any action on this?
Motion received and placed on file.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Ayes have it. Thank you. And next up, we have the student activity request from Taunton High School in the amount of $24,607.50. Mrs. Monahan?
And that is just to replenish their account for the senior prom. And that is exactly what is normally done every year at this time.
Wonderful. Mrs. Shaws?
Just that line that says reimbursement for the $11,250, that's obviously deposited into the account, but was that from the sales of prom tickets?
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
Wonderful. We wish to the committee?
Accepting.
Receive and place on file.
Receive and place on file.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have the cafeteria bid award. We'll start out with bread first. Mrs. Monahan?
As you can see on the bread, there were three vendors that had submitted a bid. Thurston Foods, which is our current vendor, Cisco Boston, and Gordon Food Service. So in that whole, and just so I can explain, the entire, in the groceries, there's an entire shopping list. And so what the food service director Glenn Motta did is he took all of the submitted pricing for that shopping list and came up with a total for each case. So what this is, is that entire shopping list, that is what the bid amount was. And so from there, we will take the lowest and most responsible bidder. So we are recommending the award grocery bid to Thurston Foods.
Okay. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we approve the bid, do we need to state the amount? Or are we just stating who the awarded bid is going to?
The recognition.
Okay. So the amount doesn't need to be stated, just who it's going to be awarded. Thank you.
So if I may elaborate, so that amount that's there, $6,927.6, what is that reflecting?
That is for every case in the grocery carts.
Every case?
So let's just say there's 20 items that were on the bid list to be bidded on. There's 20 items. Each one of those items is considered a case. And that entire 20 items for that case will come out for that bid price.
But there was one complete order, it would be $6,927.6?
That amount. Correct. For that, one of each of that order.
For one order.
Now, I know there's been some, when we have the high school subcommittee meetings, I think, Mr. Viera, you've been present, Mrs. Shaws, some of the kids have been complaining about the quality of food. Does that have any bearing on this bid?
No, it does not.
It does not. So there's no need to change over because kids are complaining that chicken fingers are not up to par, or they taste like rubber?
We need to understand, too, there are certain regulations by the state and by federal guidelines that we have to, they can't go ahead and get the chicken nuggets that they go and get at the fast food restaurants, because we do have regulations that have to be followed.
Okay. Good. Wish to the committee?
On the bread award?
Bread, or not the grocery, we were just discussing.
We were discussing, oh, yeah, sorry.
Motion to award to Thurston Food, Inc.
For the groceries?
For the groceries, correct.
It's not in the same order on the agenda.
Seconded.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Ayes have it. So that was for the groceries, Thurston Foods, Inc. Next up, we have the milk. And, Mrs. Monahan?
Two vendors placed a bid. Cape Dairy, which is our current vendor, and Thompson Food Service is our second vendor. As you can see there, we rejected the bid from Thompson Food, because in the bid itself, we requested pricing for milk products and also ice cream. Thompson Food Service did not provide any bid amount for the ice cream. So we contacted the Inspector General's office to get confirmation on what we should do. And since it is an incomplete bid, it should be rejected. So that is the reason why we have rejected it. And we are going with, and it seems to be a very good bid as well for Cape Dairy. And again, that price, which means that it's milk, ice cream, and all of that in there, and it's per carton. And then cases could be different. So like, what they say is like, a milk is per carton. So they, for the bid amount, each milk carton has a price, each ice cream has a price. Reason being, we do it that way is because one company could have a case of 20, and then another company could have a case of 24. So we do it by unit cost. So that is the reason why it's reflected there. And that is why we're doing Cape Dairy.
Very good. Wish to the committee?
Motion to award the bid to Cape Dairy LLC.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. And last but not least, we have the bread bid.
Two bids came in. Fantini Bakery and Calisi Bakery, which is our current vendor. On this one here, you see two prices, right? So the first one is the grand total price of the bid, and then the cost per serving size. When I went ahead and reviewed the bid to understand this a little bit more, it seems silly, but what it does is like rolls and slices of bread. Again, because sizes could be different. So what we do is how much a roll is and how much a slice of bread is. And that's how we did the bid amount, and then the cost per item, or per serving. So there you see, the first one is the grand total amount. And then the second one is what one item would be. So for Calisi, the one that we are saying that is currently our vendor that we are requesting, recommending the bid award to, they say that it's about $5.35 for one order. And then, and then a total amount of per item is an average of 42, excuse me, about 42 cents per item, again, per roll. And that's one order.
Very good. Wish to Mrs. Shaws?
You said that it was going to Calisi. Isn't it going to Fantini?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're correct. I apologize. Recommended bid would go to Fantini. Calisi is the current bid. Thank you very much. I apologize for that.
Yeah. So motion to award the bid to Fantini?
All in favor?
Aye. Second the motion.
I'm sorry, second the motion. Mr. Viera, thank you for seconding the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have the bills payable for FY24 in the amount of $2,439,715.53. Wish to the committee questions. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion approving the amount of $2,439,715.53.
I'll second it.
Okay. On discussion, I have a couple of maybe questions or comments. If I can just go to my pages here. Page 25, NESRA Engineering in the amount of $40,500. Is that the softball field?
Softball field, correct. That's the first part of the payment.
That's the first part.
And just in FYI, there'll be a full presentation on the 18th.
On the 18th of June?
Okay.
Beautiful. And I have one more comment. On page 28, we have a $16,073.17 on the maintenance of grounds. This vendor keeps coming up. I'm not sure what we keep buying, but this is a big amount of money, $16,073.17. What is that? Any idea?
Page 28.
Page 28. 10677.
I can assure you that it is considered to be grounds, the grounds crew items, machinery that they are needing, as we have older material, older equipment that is breaking down, and we purchase them. Please know that we do go ahead and look to see how, we compare prices, and we are making sure that we are going to the lowest vendor.
And what's the threshold on that bid process?
Hundred thousand dollars is usually.
How much?
One hundred thousand?
One hundred.
Correct. But I always ask my, our facilities director to always get me three quotes after over $10,000, anything over 10. But we always do three quotes.
I have just a couple of questions.
Let me just finish mine.
When you're done.
Yeah, please. And on page 29, I would like to be recorded as voting present on Pride, Inc. in the amount of $13,340, as I serve on the Board of Directors and as co-treasurer. So if we can put that as amended motion, I'd appreciate that. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Shaws?
Just a clarification on a couple of things. On page 12, the college board for the $61,166.48, is that for paying for PSATs, SATs?
Correct. Yes. AP exams and SAT exams.
AP and SATs, okay.
Okay. Anything further?
No.
Motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. And that concludes the Finance and Law. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. If you could please join us in the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for its students, for its nation, and for God, indivisible, omnipotent, and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early night, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Mrs. Fagan, if you would lead us in the invocation?
Yes. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. I'd like people to remain standing. I have three obituaries here that people that we've said goodbye to recently. First one is Robert Philip McCabe, who passed away on May 24th, 2024, at the age of 61. He was affectionately known as Bob, beacon of knowledge and guidance, having served as a dedicated educator in the Special Education Division at Taunton High School for over 25 years. Born in Boston, he was a proud alumnus of North Quincy High School and Bridgewater-Rainham Regional High School, continued his academic pursuits at Bridgewater State University. Beyond his professional endeavors, he loved sports. It was evident through his longstanding involvement in Rainham Youth Baseball and Softball Association from 1981 until 2011. He was not only coached, but also served as a chair, terrace member of the Board of Directors. Furthermore, his coaching talents extended to girls' basketball and softball at Taunton High School. His memory will be carried forth by those he leaves behind. His loving daughter Caitlin McCabe, his sister Kathleen Burns, and her husband Ronald, his brother James McCabe, his sister Jean Pereira, his brother Daniel McCabe, and his wife Christina, and his sister Megan McCabe. Preceding him in death were his father Robert McCabe and his mother Sally Brackett McCabe, and his sister Teresa McCoy. I'd like you to keep his family and his thoughts and his prayers. I had the pleasure of knowing him, because I've been on the school committee so long. He just was a very, very, very nice man and gracious about everything. Next person is Calvin Dewey, Dewey. It's a difficult name to say. His daughter, who is a recent graduate of Taunton High, Condoleezza. And his mother, his, excuse me, his wife, Josephine, served with some of the members of the school committee in picking the new principal at Taunton High School. And there's two other sisters involved here. We don't have any information on the service, but we want to extend our sincere sympathy to the family and to his children. Last person here is, and this, Mayor O'Connell gave us this release, the passing of Evangeline Eva Borges, mother of city councilor, Estelle Borges, who's always been a friend to the school committee, and she had her children go through Taunton High. She was a beloved wife, mother, and grandmother who will be deeply missed. Her visiting hours will be held on Friday, June 7th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Silver Funeral Home. And the Mass of Christian burial will be held on Saturday at St. Anthony's Church. So in your thoughts and prayers, or whatever quiet time you have, if you can think of these people and ask God to watch over all of them in a very difficult time in their lives. Moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
And roll call. Mr. Enos is absent. Mrs. Shaws?
Present.
While he's not here in body. Sorry, Mr. Enos. Mr. Enos?
Present.
I apologize. Mrs. Shaws?
Present.
Mr. Palowski?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is present. Mrs. Santos?
Present.
Mr. Viera?
Present.
Mr. Laura?
Present.
Chairman, Greg Dr. DeMello?
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Approval of the minutes of May 1st, 2024, and May 15th, 2024.
As recorded as such. Approval, motion to approve.
Can I just make a comment? It's super, it's really not that.
Can I just get a second?
Oh, sorry.
Yep, no, that's okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, second on discussion.
Again, it's not really a huge deal. I'm just not Mrs. Santos. And it's happened before, but I keep seeing it. So I just wanted to correct that.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. So with those corrections, motion and second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Okay. And we have with us tonight Isaiah Wendell for the Student Advisory Committee report.
Thank you. As Mayor O'Connell said, my name is Isaiah Wendell, and I am part of the Taunton High School Student Advisory Committee. Some things going on at Taunton High School. MCAS testing has concluded for this academic school year, except for any necessary retakes. Our ninth grade students completed their seventh grade MCAS yesterday and today. We wish the students who took that the best of luck. Skills USA Nationals will take place the week following the end of the school year. We extend our best wishes to all of those who will be competing. Our scholarship recognition night and graduation ceremonies were both memorable events for our seniors. Congratulations to the Taunton High School class of 2024. As you embark on your new journeys, remember that once a tiger, always a tiger. As many of you know, this marks Principal Holcomb's final year at Taunton High School. Principal Holcomb, it has been an honor to collaborate with you. Your leadership dedication and forward thinking has been an inspiration to us all at Taunton High School. Your impact as principal, as both a principal and a mentor, has been profound, shaping our school community for the better. As you transition to new opportunities, we express our sincerest gratitude and wishing you continued success. I would also like to welcome Dr. Harrison to our school community, where eagerly anticipate the fresh perspective and innovate, innovation, innovative ideas you'll bring with your guidance. And confident, and we are confident our school will continue to thrive. Thank you, Principal Holcomb, for your unwavering dedication, just as we say to our seniors, once a tiger, always a tiger. And to Dr. Harris, welcome to Tiger Nation. Together, we look forward to achieving great things. Additionally, as you know, this is Coach Otto Viennelli's last year as he retires closing of the school year. Coach Otto Viennelli, our athletic director, we extend our deepest gratitudes to you. Your passion, commitment, and leadership in our athletic programs have made a lasting impact on our school. Through victories and challenges you've instilled in us with values of teamwork and perseverance, we wish you a fulfilling retirement, knowing that your legacy will endure. At the same time, we welcome Mr. Doughty as our new athletic director. We're excited to embark on this new chapter under your guidance. Together, let's build upon the strong foundation Coach Otto Viennelli has laid. In conclusion, this wraps up my student advisory report for the 2023-2024 school year. I want to extend my gratitude for the opportunity to present during these meetings. Your attention and engagement means a lot to me. Rest assured, this won't be my last report. I will be back in September. You can't get rid of me that easily. I wish everyone a fantastic summer, and as always, thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah. You have done a wonderful job all year, and we look forward to you coming back in September with us at our meetings. And of course, many congratulations and best luck to all of our students who just graduated. Mr. Laura?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I make a motion to accept those wonderful comments.
I don't think we need to, I don't think we need a motion to accept those, because we're doing all roll calls, because.
But I'm just saying, you know, for his great positive comments to us, to his demeanor, how he handles himself professionally, we look forward to seeing you back in September. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Laura.
Can I make a quick comment?
You can make a comment, but we don't need a motion.
No, no.
I just want to say, I so thoroughly enjoyed working with you.
Yes.
I think you are absolutely wonderful spokesman for the high school. You present yourself unbelievably well for a student that's only a sophomore. So my hat's off to you, because you do a really good job. So I just wanted you to know I appreciated that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
No motion necessary on that comment.
And I know the entire school committee joins in all of those comments. You're welcome. Okay. Is there any public input this evening?
There's no public input, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. And so we will go right to public hearing for FY 2025 budget.
Mayor, a motion would be in order to open up the public hearing, and that should be on a roll call vote.
Can we get a motion?
Second on that.
Motion and second on.
By name, by individual.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaws?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Excellent. Motion passes. Okay. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. School committee members, again, thank you for this opportunity. It's been a long road as far as the development of the FY 25 budget. And this will be our second to last meeting. On June 11th, we are all invited. School committee and my leadership team will be invited to the city council at 6:00 p.m. on June 11th to present our budget to the city council, and that'll be our final budget presentation. However, today is our budget hearing, and I believe there was no public input for the, for our budget hearing. But this is the night that the school committee approves the budget number that I am going to present, which has not changed since the budget presentation that you had back in April, the budget presentation that we had in May, same figure. And the budget presentation you're going to hear tonight, and the presentation you'll hear on the 11th, the overall number has not changed. So I will not belabor a lot of the slides, but just for those watching at home, I will go, I will go through the key aspects of the presentation. So as we've done in the past, provided you with a very thorough, very comprehensive list and table of contents of the budget documents. This is a comprehensive 33-page document, including the line item budget. I think it's also very important for the committee and those at home to get a little snapshot of who we are as a school system. And these are, this is old data, but I believe on Sunday, we graduated 573 students, and it's usually about 60% of the graduating class attends college or university. And you can see that information here. Our mission and our vision, our strategic promise and our objectives, and I also provided you, as you recall, back in April, a snapshot of all the work that we've done around our strategic objectives. And as a superintendent and my leadership team, and I believe as committee, I think overall, we've done a very good job of making sure that what we do as a school system touches one of these four buckets. And a lot of the work is captured on slides four through seven. On slide eight, I start to provide you with some background information regarding the state of the state of Massachusetts when it comes to revenue and its forecast and its projections for fiscal '26, excuse me, fiscal '25. And in this slide, I provided you with the actual snapshot of the benchmark, what they were anticipating for collections, and what the actual collection. So this has not been updated since our presentation in January, so I will continue to move through these slides. And the only thing I want to point here is that you see FY '22 revenue projections versus FY '25 revenue projections have started to plateau, started to flatline. And that can be attributed to not as much federal funding, not as much state funding in the form of grants and other COVID support funding not being, not making its way into the market, or be, making its way into the homes, and obviously into small businesses and businesses across the, across the state. And then the Massachusetts Stabilization Fund, which I believe you'll, we will probably see the stabilization fund utilized next year for fiscal '26 to help balance the budget if these trends continue. That's just my projection. And again, providing you with a snapshot on those budget resources. And this, this slide, as we start to get into chapter 70, kind of points out, indicates, back in fiscal '20, we saw a chapter 70 increase of $269 million. During COVID, the increase was only $107 million. As we started to rebound from COVID, $220 million, and then we saw significant contributions because of rising inflation, and also because of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. However, because of low inflation this year of 1.35%, you see that we are flatlining or plateauing back to FY '20 increase to chapter 70. So again, a $263 million increase is on par with where we were when the SOA was originally implemented, or to be implemented in fiscal '20. And we've, we've spent some time discussing the inflation gap. In your packet, you actually will see the letter that I shared with our local representatives. So thank you, Ms. Santos, for that recommendation. And Mrs. Monahan has done a nice job of tracking the budget as it made its way from the governor to the House and to the Senate. And you'll notice that the only change was a $70,000 increase through the House raise in means. There was no increase in the Senate budget. So overall, from where we stand today, the budget will go to conference committee. And here we are in June. Then ultimately, it will go through vetoes, overrides, and then we should have a final budget, hopefully approved by the end of the month, or sometime in early July. Because the last thing we want to see is school systems throughout the Commonwealth operating on a 1/12 budget. And just some comparisons to last year, overall increases. So our enrollment continues to trend up. I think if you look at our October 1 report, we're probably, over the last two years, we've seen an increase of close to 300 students, which is the size of a small elementary school. The foundation budget has increased by $8.5 million. The city's percentage of that is about 35%. So 35% of $8.5 million is 2.5. And chapter 70 makes up about 65% of that $8.5 million totals. So our chapter 70 increase was $6, 36,966. In the chapter 70 foundation budget, this is the slide that provides you with all the different categories. We, you see the chapter 70 enrollment. And for each student who attends the Taunton Public Schools from the state, we receive $16,995. Excuse me. Per the foundation enrollment, we are to spend $16,995 per student. Of that $16,995, 65% comes in the form of aid, 20%, 35% comes from the local contribution. And again, the city's share, in order to get to net school spending, now the state's share is about 68%, so just under $95 million. And the city's share, which also includes indirect costs, is approximately $45 million, so 68-32 split. And I also provided you on the left with a breakdown of our key funding sources. So a majority of our funding came from increases in elementary, and also our commitment to continue to grow our chapter 74 programs. Not only does it generate additional chapter $74, but it also provides our kids with a pathway post-high school to enter the career force. And then obviously, unfortunately, we do have a large population of low-income students, and we saw a $3 million increase. And I also provided you with the inflation over the last five, last six fiscal years. Again, the last two years. Again, the last two years, 4.5%. Unfortunately, this year, 1.35% why we see a shift from $10 million in Chapter 70 increase to just over $6 million. But again, I think I would be foolish if I stood before you and said that we could not balance or we could not manage our budget with a $6 million Chapter 70 increase. So I believe we've been very fiscally responsible. And again, Mrs. Moynihan does a nice job of tracking the budget compared to last year to where we are this year. And the appropriation that we are requesting has not changed since our first presentation, and we believe this gets us to 100% net school spending. But again, these figures have not been audited, so it may increase. The city may come in higher than 100% net school spending, which I believe they will if they adhere to this figure of $120,589,479, I believe is a fair, and that gets us to 100% net school spending, and that is a figure that we have agreed upon with our partners on the city side. Just providing you with a little history of net school spending since fiscal '13 through fiscal '25, a comparison on how we stack up compared to the other urban districts. And again, Cambridge is an outlier, but for the most part, you see most urban districts are around 100% net school spending. And of the $120 million, of the $120 million we are requesting in the form of our appropriation, 95 million, around 95 million comes in the form of aid, Chapter 78, and that is an increase of $6 million. So almost 79% comes in the form of aid from the state. The city's contribution is about 21%, and that makes up the $25,694,327. And again, that gets us to 100% net school spending. And just a little diagram, a little visual to show out of every dollar that's spent, what comes in the form of aid and what is contributed locally. And the request or the number that I'm asking the committee or proposing that the committee approve this evening is an appropriation for fiscal '25 in the amount of $120 million, And just to provide you with our fixed costs, salary, fixed cost increase of about 8.7 million. Our special ed tuition utilizing circuit breaker, we did see a decrease in what we're putting in our appropriation. Transportation increased by 1.2 million. Our utilities utilizing a COLA increased by 150. Contracted services increased by 250,000. Our supplies, just utilizing some remaining ESRA dollars and some other grant funding, we were able to decrease that line by 55,000. And our maintenance that we put, again, support, the maintenance in our buildings increased by a modest $8,000, which is an overall increase of 5.12%, which if you look at our history, it's in line with the increases we've seen in the past. Since fiscal '17 to fiscal '25, it's been about a 4.5% increase. So again, 5% I believe is fair. And again, utilizes the Chapter 70 increase plus some revenue in the lines of circuit breaker. Provide you with a city snapshot of all the different departments that the city is responsible for funding, and the education portion of it. And I just want to point out that the education portion also includes Bristol Plymouth and Bristol Aggie. So any Taunton student that attends Taunton Public Schools, Bristol Aggie, or Bristol Community, that's what that $107 million figure represents. And obviously, our portion, because we have the most students, makes up a majority of that large piece of the blue. And just providing you with per pupil expenditures, we do have some of the lowest per pupil admin costs, but if you analyze this chart, you'll see that we have made some gains in other areas. I'm very proud of the fact that as a school system, we put our dollars in the classrooms to support our students. And that was very clear and evident last year when you supported close to $700,000 to be used in student supports in the reset space. Very proud of the work we've done around the Student Opportunity Act. We just submitted our second version of the Student Opportunity Act, which you approved, I believe, back in April. And every item here, I believe, we have accomplished. Very proud of the fact that we have six full-day pre-K classrooms. Actually got to speak with the Secretary of Education, Patrick Tuttwild, today, and again thanked him and praised him for his support in supporting urban centers and school systems such as Taunton to expand early childhood opportunities. I can't say enough about this committee's vision. Mr. DeMello, you want to hold up the food truck because that contributes to our Chapter 74 programs? So part of our vision to expand Chapter 74 programs is our students are going to get real-life experience, working in a food truck as part of our culinary art program with a state-of-the-art commercial kitchen that's industry-standard, an outdoor dining area, plus an indoor dining area. So kids going through our program will have industry-standard experience. So I'm very proud of your work and your support. Early College, we're one of seven or eight schools, I believe, this year who received their early college designation. You have been tenacious when it comes to reducing class sizes. You see the average class size, how it's gone down over the years, and that is, again, almost 80 cents out of every dollar spent in the school department is in salaries. So when we add a teacher, now we're making a significant commitment to improving the education our students receive. And then social-emotional learning, I mean, I know there's, we've done some good work, but I know there's more that can be done, and we'll continue to do more work. The ESRA positions that we've talked about that have been rolled over over a three-year period, and again, I'm very proud that this budget signifies, identifies zero costs and zero reductions in staff, and we've been able to provide level services by rolling over all our grant positions, again, methodically and doing it in a way that's fiscally responsible so that we don't have to cut or lay people off. And I'm very proud of the fact that as we lean on the city when it comes to the MSBA, the new schools, the renovations through core projects, the new Mulcahy, we know that the city is carrying some debt over a 20-year period of time, and I'm very proud of the fact that we have been able to contribute with these facility upgrades, not only that get used during the school day, but a lot of these upgrades are utilized 24/7 outside of the school day, beyond the school day on weekends, not only by local communities but surrounding communities. So I'm very proud of the fact that we have a great partnership with our partners on the city side. And this work is exhausting. I believe by leveraging our partnerships, we can provide more opportunities and more access for our students. And these are just some of the partners that we have engaged with during my tenure as superintendent. Some partners are not listed. It does involve our time commitment on my behalf and my leadership team, but again, we believe that working with these partners, leveraging these partners produces a quality education that we can be very proud of at the Taunton Public Schools. So I believe that concludes our budget hearing presentation. If there are any slides you'd like me to refer to, I'd be happy to refer to a slide and answer your question. However, the purpose of this evening is to approve the appropriation in the amount of $120,589,479 for fiscal '25.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Cabral, and I will open it up to the committee if there are any questions or comments. And then I do believe we need to open up for public input, public comment.
One quick question.
Mr. Laura?
The amount that we spend per student is what, $16,000?
According to the state, we spend a little more because this doesn't factor in. When we do the end-of-the-year report, Mr. Laura, the end-of-the-year report will include revolving funds and will also include grant funding, but as far as our appropriation, it's $16,995.
And that amount changes every year?
If, most likely will go up if our enrollment continues to go up in inflation.
Right. Per student enrollment.
Per pupil.
Per pupil.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Ms. Shaws?
Just a quick question. On the Slide 31, where you had all of the positions, the ones that are orange, are those still ones waiting to be filled?
Those are the ones that we have not filled. Obviously, we will not have to utilize COVID pool testing anytime soon. I believe, as we discussed during our budget workshop, the pre-K through 1, Special Education Coordinator, that can be changed, probably looking at job descriptions differently. So I think that would be a zero cost to the school system. And the attendance officer, which we discussed during the budget hearing, that is something I believe we could fund utilizing positions that we have not filled.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, if there's no, Dr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Superintendent, this is already on the website, the FY '25 or will be on the website?
This, the previous presentations have been posted. This presentation will be posted along with the City Council presentation.
Wonderful. And for the public at home, I think you've already said it, that there are no positions being eliminated. We are continuing servicing our students and our staff to its full capacity. I think that's a testament not only to our committee here, but of course, the city side of things with City Council and everybody that's involved. And the citizens should be proud because as we read the newspapers and listen to the news, there's budget deficits of millions and millions of dollars, there's teachers being laid off, contracted services being cut. So congratulations to you, Mr. Superintendent, and your team, and of course, with the support of the school committee and our partners and city government, I think it's a true testament and the taxpayers and citizens of Taunton should be very proud. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just want to, again, commend the committee for trusting the process. Now, a lot of, I think in some cases, when people go too fast or when organizations grow too fast, they realize that the funding may not be there. So I want to commend you for trusting the process and allowing us to grow in a way that made sense for Taunton.
Okay. So can we have a motion to open public input?
I would so move that motion.
Motion second to open public input on a roll call, please.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaws?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Is there anyone here to offer public comment on the budget hearing? Okay, seeing no one, we can have a motion to close and approve the number as indicated by Superintendent Cabral.
I think we should be explicit on the number.
Yeah, if you don't mind. It's right behind you, Mr. Laura. You can...
Offer the amount of $120 million, 589,479.
Mayor, may I just ask for clarification on that motion?
Motion and second on discussion, please.
I'd like a clarification on that motion, please, because I missed part of it. The motion is to close public hearing and to approve the recommendation of the superintendent in the amount of $120 million, 589,479. Is that correct?
Approve the appropriation.
With the appropriation as stated.
Yep, with the appropriation. Okay, I just want to make sure we get some clarity that...
So the motion is to approve the appropriation of $120 million, 589,479.
And close public input.
All right, so we're clear. So that's the motion. It was seconded. Did we, somebody just say second? Just make sure. Thank you. Motion and second on a roll call, please.
Yep.
Oh, Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaws?
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Fagan votes no. Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, so we'll just give Superintendent Cabral a moment to sit down, and then we will go to superintendent's report, which includes book study and then his report, and I would suggest that no motions are needed under F as the report is already part of the record.
So thank you, Madam Mayor. So as we have been, as we have been doing once a month, I have provided you with a quick little summary, also provided you with some notes today regarding Chapter 4, which completes the first section of the Governance Core. So just open it up to anyone if there's any comments or anything you'd like to share regarding what I shared with you, what I shared in the memo or something that you read that caught your eye that you'd like to share regarding Chapter 4.
Mrs. Fagan.
I read it all, Mr. Cabral, and then I looked back to see when this book was published, and I wondered if some of the comments he made about the relationship the school committees have with one another, particularly the new members, if that might have been different if he was writing it at a different time because they were talking about, you know, the supporting one another and don't go in with singular agendas and all those different things, which when you hear long enough, you know, you know that, and you know, you try to, you know, be respectful of one another. But as of late, and I think we've all seen it everywhere, there's an awful lot of contentiousness right now. And I kept thinking about that as I was reading that, and sometimes, you know, when you have a different opinion and somebody doesn't agree with it, it's right away, it's, you can't agree to disagree. It always becomes, it goes a step further, and I feel bad about that. That's the, that's the one thing I miss that even when I first got on the committee. And I know the advice they give people, wait and listen before you say too much and all those different things they were talking about. It's a good thing to do that, to get a lay of the land before you say too much. But when people say to me, what do you miss the most? And I say, I miss the fact that even though we could disagree at meetings, we all walked out friends, and there's so much of that not happening anymore. So I often wonder what would it have been like if he had gone through the, these authors had gone through the whole COVID experience? I don't know if anybody else felt the same way, but that's so drastically changed the way people are towards one another. And sometimes it's, you know, you just look at it and go, oh, why do we have to be like this? Why can't we just all get along? So that's, that was my thought from the chapter. It was interesting, but, you know, and then I thought, did we really give enough time to our newer members? Because you don't really know all, you know, the rules and how everything goes. And I said, gee, did we even do that? Because we've had such a busy year and, you know, it's just been, this year particularly got kind of discombobulated a little bit. We're still trying to get a night that we can do our thing at the high school, you know, to do our thing where we just honor people in the system. So I, you know, I just wanted to say, I hope we gave enough to the people that were here, and I hope they at least feel like they were welcomed. That's what I hope because I know they say every time you get another member on, it's a new committee. And so that's my comment on it.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Yep.
Ms. Santos?
And I think a lot of this, and this is what I was saying, because I know that the three of us are usually the ones that comment on this. Okay. And so I was reading this, and I'm like, well, I can't, this is not really for us two, Mrs. Shaws and I. First part of that was not for us. It was for the rest of the school year, right? Things that may or could happen in the future as far as how you would welcome in a new trustee member, someone, and so forth, right? So that's, oh, sorry.
So that was the thing that I was thinking about. And as far as my process, I mean, I, you know, I have, you know, people have reached out to me as far as whenever I needed help or questions, you know, I could contact them, and that's great. I know for me, it is, and I'm not going to speak for her, it has been incredible learning experience over the time, and I think sometimes it was like, all right, go, learn, right? And so that can be overwhelming, especially dealing with other outside responsibilities with work and things like that, trying to kind of keep up and trying to do the best that I can because also that we are public employees and knowing what that means, so on and so forth, I think that's been an adjustment. I know for me, like the subcommittees, I had no idea how to take notes and what the report is supposed to be like. So when I did my first report, I'm like crossing my fingers, like I really hope that this is okay, because I was just learning based on what I saw here versus having like, this is what it should look like, this is what you should include. And I know for me, it's really hard to take notes while you're trying to listen at the same time, so it's kind of overwhelming, especially when we go like an hour and there's lots of conversations, and I'm like, where's my attention supposed to be? So I, for me, I think something of that sort of orientation, what they had talked about, would have been really useful as far as even what just the roles of the subcommittee are as well, too. And I know we have access to that handbook, which I've read, which is really long, I understand, but I think maybe having more of that onboarding that they talk about, I think would have been a little bit more useful, especially I think, I know some of you all knew each other beforehand. I didn't necessarily feel that way, so I think that would have kind of helped me feel a little bit more like welcomed, you know? But as far as what they said, as far as our role as the new, you know, obviously, we're learning as we go and asking questions, and obviously, you guys probably know by now I'm not afraid to ask questions. So that in itself, those are things that I kind of already knew beforehand. I think one thing I'm still, is the conflict of interest that I'm still grappling with or trying to understand, you know, for me, just being a member of the MTA, I'm like, how does that work, you know? Or, you know, working at Bridgewater State, if things come up, like how does that work? Things like that, you know? So I think that in itself is, is something that I have to obviously ask questions about as well, too. But also knowing that us coming in, we carry our own experiences and things like that so that we have something of value to bring into it as well, I think is important as well.
Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santos. Mrs. Shaws?
I will concur with Melissa. I felt the, the same way. Like teachers have a new teacher orientation, it'd be nice to have a new school committee member orientation because it was sort of trial by fire here in some of the things that we were doing. A couple of things that I read that I happened to like was that it's, there was a quote that said every time a new trustee joins the board, it's a new board. And I think that's important to think about, to that, that it is all brand new. And I think one of the things that sort of helped that was when we did the retreat. And it would have been nice if the retreat was a little bit earlier because I think that would have helped us. Because that at least gave us a different insight to everybody. And I think it sort of developed the friendships that, where Melissa said we really didn't know everybody, that sort of like, you know, it was a little bit more laid back and we got to laugh together and we got to get to know each other that we didn't know before. So I think that was helpful. And I think we do a good job of, it said divergent opinions and points of view are welcomed and encouraged. And I do think that the school committee does a good job of that. I've felt that I can voice my opinions and have not felt like anybody gets upset and/or is rude and disrespectful, you know, for saying something. So I did enjoy that chapter. I thought it was interesting. But I would have liked a little bit more coming in. I felt bad for Melissa because at least from my experience, I came from the district. So I knew the players of when you're talking about special ed or you're talking about principals. And I thought how much harder it had to be for her. So I thought when we got the organizational chart, that should have been something like done right away so that, you know, coming in and you're a new person, you'd get an idea of what was going on. So I think in the future, if we're going to have new school committee members that are going to come in, that maybe right away, there's some kind of orientation for them to, to help them. Because I'm still grappling is, how do I say this? You know, what's the saying to have to do this? And we went to, you know, a, a, a state, state training, but it's still very different than, than actually being here.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Shaws. Dr. DeMello?
If I may, so fourth term, still learning every day, right? We don't know it all. We ask each other and support each other. I knew that on day one, both you, Mrs. Shaws, and you, Ms. Santos, were going to hit the ground running, no hesitation, just like we all did when we first started our first term. And we've been working well together and just the testament of the budget presentation a few minutes ago is a testament to that. So it's a learning experience and it's, we're lifelong learners. So welcome aboard and hopefully we continue this run. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Superintendent?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I hope some of you take Mr. Ben up and Mr. My, and me up on the opportunity to attend the MESS, MESE conference in November and talk about this work during a panel discussion. We can't bring everybody, but if somebody would like to serve and talk to other superintendents and other school committee members about why this work is important, then please, let's, let's put together a strong team and have a good showing.
Okay, excellent.
I just have one more comment. Last night I was, I had gotten a new computer and we had to download things from my other one and all that stuff. And as I was going through emails and I had to, because now I've got a MacBook, so that's different from the thing. And I keep wanting to touch the glass and I'm not supposed to be touching the glass. But up comes, I called you about it too, Steve. It's like, I'm, I'm having a real horror show here. But anyway, I went through and in the mail, I had a reporter that had sent something to me for one of the news stations about a recent incident here. And I looked at that and I said, nope. I said, aren't you going to keep that? I said, nope. And I'm not the chairman of the committee. The chairman of the committee is supposed to respond to those things, not the rest of us. Because the chairman is the spokesman for us. So I wanted to tell you that. I don't know if anybody tried to contact you.
Me.
Yeah, and, and some of the stuff, I just don't feel that, that, that the rest of us should be commenting on it. And that was another lesson, too, that, you know, it's okay to have your individual opinions. But, you know, when you have an individual opinion, that's not always the, the opinion of the whole school committee. So I think you have to be careful about things like that. But it was a nice refresher course and getting ourselves, like you said, the stuff that you just keep strengthening what we're supposed to be. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mr. Laura?
If I could, procedurally, it is my understanding that if a question comes to any of us school committee members, I automatically refer to the chairman. If it's school committee relation.
Is this regarding the book study?
No, I'm just saying for the fact.
Okay, because that's what, okay.
For the fact.
That's what we're on, the book study.
That I would not answer a question if I'm contacted by a certain entity throughout the community. If it refers, our method of operation, I would refer that matter right to the chairman of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Okay.
Quite welcome.
Any other question, any other comments on the book study? Okay, all right. So we will move to the superintendent's report.
Good news on the superintendent part. You're not going to hear from me. I'm going to invite Director of Student Services and Transportation Stephanie Hoy to, to carry out or to read my superintendent's report and also share a little information about two guests we have in the audience this evening.
Good evening. As you are all aware, we have two very important members of our school community retiring at the end of the month. Mark Aurea Viannelli, as Isaiah said his goodbye so nicely earlier on today. And of course, nurse manager Karen Regan, both big, very big shoes to fill. But I am honored and pleased to come before you today to introduce you to two of our newest employees who will undoubtedly continue the great work that both Mark and Karen have done here in our district. I'd like to start off with our athletic director. I am pleased to announce that Rafael Doughty will be our new athletic director for the 2024-25 school year. Rafael brings over fifteen years of experience in managing athletic programs, coaching, and leading teams. He has shown a deep dedication to student success and community involvement, making him an excellent fit to lead our athletic department. Currently, Rafael is an assistant principal at Parker Middle School, where his leadership reduced student suspensions by seventy percent and increased student athletic participation. His athletic background includes significant contributions to football programs at the University of Rhode Island, Brown University, Northeastern University, and other colleges in the South. At the University of Rhode Island, Rafael was the recruiting coordinator and linebacker coach, where he managed practice plans, skill development, and the recruiting budget. He also worked with the NFL teams to promote players, several who went to play pro. At Northeastern, he served as an assistant head football coach, managing budgets up to five point five million dollars and leading defensive game planning. Before Parker Middle School, he was the dean of students at City on the Hill Char, Charter Public School in New Beaufort. Rafael holds a Master of Education in Educational Leadership from Bridgewater State University and a Bachelor of Science in Business Management and Economics from West Virginia Wesleyan College. In addition to his professional work, he is an active community service member, including, in community service, including youth football programs and mentoring. I am confident that he will lead our athletic department to new heights and many more new championships down the road. With further ado, Rafael Doughty.
Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it. Just want to say thank you to the school committee. Also thank you to Mr. Cabral. Thank you to all the administration that put me in this position where I can elevate and help our student athletes to be successful. But most importantly, I want to thank our families and our students. Students come first. And my job as the new athletic director is to make sure our students are in great positions to be successful. Thank you.
We're here to work with you. You're as late as it is. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Doughty. Next, nurse manager. I am pleased to announce the appointment of Paula Magnasco as the new nurse manager for Taunton Public Schools effective July first. Ms. Magnasco brings over two decades of experience in healthcare and nursing, offering a wealth of knowledge and leadership to our district. Paula's career includes extensive experience in pediatrics, behavioral health, and emergency medicine. Her journey in school nursing began over a decade ago when she was recruited as one-to-one nurse for a medically complex student while working part-time as a life science nurse researcher. This role ignited her passion for school nursing, leading her to pursue a specialized career in this field. Paula graduated with high honors from Western Governors University, earning a Master's of Science in Nursing Leadership and Management. She also holds a Nursing Associate in Science from Massasoia Community College and a Bachelor of Arts from Bridgewater State College, or University now, majoring in Communication and English with minors in Health and Business Management and Art. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Paula played a pivotal role as the district nurse manager coordinator of school nursing at Middle Borough Public Schools. She supervised and supported the nursing staff, ensuring implementation of safety protocols and managing health crisis. Her leadership was crucial in maintaining the health and safety of students and staff during the challenging period. Please join me in welcoming Paula Magnasco to Taunton Public Schools. We are excited to have her on our team and are confident that she will maintain exceptional quality of health services across all of our schools. Paula Magnasco.
Thank you, Director Hoy. Thank you all for having me. It's a pleasure and an honor to be joining your team. And I love all your jerseys. They look great on each of you. I wanted to also extend my appreciation. Today I spent the day with Karen Regan and she sure does have big shoes to fill. I joked, I have big feet. So I look forward to filling those shoes as best I can. And it was a wonderful opportunity to meet and feel all the enthusiasm from all the departments. I met so many wonderful people. We were able to meet the nurses and become familiar with the health offices at eight schools today. So I look forward to the three more schools. I'll be here on Friday and then again on the seventeenth. I look forward to serving the community. It's an honor. I look forward to every student having safe access to health, education, and the classroom. I, I really honor what we do and it's a wonderful opportunity to be part of your team. Thank you for having me.
So Superintendent, does that conclude the report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. No action necessary. Next up, we have Administrative Business Staffing Report. See enclosure. Any comments on that? Mr. Viera?
Motion received and placed on file.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Next up, Taunton Public Schools Staffing Update.
This will be the final staffing update that you'll, you'll receive for fiscal '24. As you can see, we're ending the year with twenty vacancies. And all these positions have been posted, as you know, on the second page of the report. All these vacancies were included in the FY '25 postings to be filled next year.
Same procedure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Next up, we have the Taunton Public Schools District Enrollment Update.
Actually, for a first time in a few months, we actually saw a decrease in enrollment. So we saw a decrease in enrollment by fifteen students, with the largest decrease being in students in our pre-K program. I'll also point out, if you look at the out of district students, we had some students age out, or students who moved out of the district. So out of district student numbers went from one hundred and twenty-one back in April to one hundred and six in, in May. And it looks like right now we're hovering at around eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine students.
Wonderful. Motion to file?
Second.
The report. What's that, Mr. Laura?
Motion to file the enrollment report.
Received and placed on file.
Yes.
Second by Mr. Shaws. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Next up, Inflation Factor calculation letter to legislators.
Just informational purposes only. This was the memo of the letter that Mrs. Santos made a motion that was seconded for me to send to our elected officials. You'll note that it does say to whom it may concern, but each letter was personalized.
Wonderful. Any comments?
Same procedure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Next up, Two Hamilton Street Use Letter.
Again, just informational purposes, just wanted to provide you with the backup, as well as all the backup involving Two Hamilton Street. So this is the memo that I shared with Building Superintendent Chris Carmichael regarding the school committee's vote on May fifteenth, that the preferred grade spans for the building would be grades five through twelve. And I, I am awaiting communication from super, from Building Superintendent Christopher Carmichael.
Mr. Viera?
Sorry, doctor. On the, the last procedure, there wasn't, there wasn't a second, so I just want to make sure that.
On the inflation calculator?
Who did you, did you get somebody noted as a second?
Was, who seconded that? I thought Mrs. Shaws seconded it. One before that, okay.
Which one are we talking about?
So let's revert back to item four, Inflation Factor calculation letter to legislators. I'm sorry?
I made a motion.
There was no second.
I made the motion to accept.
So let's, the, the, the motion is on the floor.
Yes.
By Mrs., Miss, Miss Santos, seconded by Mr. Laura.
I made a motion to accept.
And placed on file.
Okay, so Mr., I, I remember now what happened. Mr. Laura, I corrected your motion.
Yes.
To receive and place on file.
And no one seconded it.
It is now seconded by Mrs. San, Ms. Santos. Ms. Santos, have you seconded the motion?
I have, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Viera. On the Two Hamilton Street Use Letter, there's going to be a motion on the floor. Mr. Viera, is that your wish?
What, what actions needed? So moved.
Okay, on, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Palowski seconded it on discussion. Has there been a response? Now, this, this wasn't sent out today, right, Mr. Superintendent? Okay. Has there been a response from Mr. Carmichael?
No, we have, I have yet to receive a response.
Okay, great. So motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have the field trip requests. Mr. Superintendent?
So in your packet, you have a Skills USA National Trip for four students and two chaperones to attend. And this, they will depart on June twenty-fourth, so about a week or so after the school year. And they will return on June twenty-ninth.
I've reviewed the information on the request form. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions, comments, which is of the committee?
Motion approved as presented.
Dear second, second by Ms. Santos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have the Taunton Abroad Greece twenty, June twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, I believe this is for pre-approval or prelim approval. So you'll see that Mrs. Golda has submitted an application for thirty-six students, six chaperones to attend a field trip abroad. I believe this one's to Athens and the Aegean Sea. They depart six twenty of twenty-five and they return six twenty-eight of twenty-five. Again, seeking preliminary approval.
If I may just take a moment while, before I ask for some action here. A lot of paper this time, let's see. Yes, of course.
How often do? How often, like the programs Taunton Abroad, how long has that been kind of in action and how often do they travel? Informational purposes.
Yeah, it would be, I mean, we had a little hiatus during COVID. So I think things are starting to get back into gear. I can recall years where we've had several trips abroad. Portugal, Spain, Greece, Italy.
And how are the students chose, like, do they have to have certain criteria in order to attend?
Usually, sometimes it's part of a department or part of a course, but students can volunteer or students can self-select to go and raise funds to attend.
Let me just take a second here. Yeah, I, I think a motion be in order to accept the preliminary approval for this trip. If that's, someone like to move that motion? Mr. Viera?
Second.
Second by Ms. Santos. I'd like to add that we also continue to get updates. This is for June of twenty-twenty-five, so I would probably think a ninety-day prior would be in order. So that's, what, February, March, April, May, maybe March of twenty-twenty-five so that we can get updated. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Laura?
On that price for Greece, is that set price or is that subject to change?
You'll notice the note, it says per pupil cost four thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and includes a protected plan. So I believe that's the rate they lock there.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have the Esports Club National Competition.
This is exciting. And again, this is a competition. We actually had three high school students from our gaming club qualify for Nationals. So the recommendation or the approval will be for three students. This could be subject to change to attend Nationals Gaming Competition with one chaperone. The price right now, again, subject to change, is one thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. I believe that will change depending on the flights that they're able to book. They are scheduled to fly out on six nineteen and return on six twenty-four, so this will occur after school has ended.
Ms. Santos?
I just have a question and I, because all of the ones that we've approved so far, and this is these and the ones before, all have this front page here that lays out everything very specifically, but this one doesn't, and I didn't know if there was a reason for that.
Different page?
No, so that general, the general information that has, like, the curriculum standards addressed, all of that, I don't have that one.
Oh, because this is the club and a competition.
Oh, so they don't?
Right. At the school club.
Okay. That's okay.
Did I call that vote?
No.
No. Which to the committee?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Santos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next up, we have the Band Canoe Bay Lake Park.
This is a trip?
Second.
What's that? I'm sorry? Move approval?
I moved approval.
Move approval, okay.
It's not that far. That's...
And there's a second by Mr. Viera.
Yeah.
They're leaving this weekend, okay? Looks good. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. I mean, yeah, eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have Subcommittee Reports. We'll start off with High School Advisory. Chairman Palowski?
Thank you, Dr. Demello. So on Wednesday, May 1st, we had two meetings of the High School Subcommittee. The first was with the Taunton High School Student Advisory and the second was with the Taunton Alternative High School Student Advisory. So, not that I don't love all of our school committee meetings that we have, but these are my favorite meetings of the entire year. We get to hear directly from our students and give them a chance to have their voices heard, and being able to have this meeting twice in the year, these students have been able to see the actual outcome of their input. So I really get to commend Principal Holcomb and his team for assembling this committee. We had representatives from every single grade, from eighth grade to 12th grade, including our own Isaiah Wendell, who gave great input, but I'm just going to call out the kids that were on this team, because that, it was really great to see this much attendance. So we had Natalie Duncan from the 11th grade, Mary Kelly from the 9th grade, Alany Murphy from 10th grade, Kaylee Sanchez from the 12th grade, Latitia Lopes from the 12th grade, Julia Mandonka from 11th grade, Caleb Silveira from the 8th grade, Isaiah Wendell from 10th grade, Ellie Ann Harden, 8th grade, Jessica Chukwu from the 9th grade, Leanna Moore from the 10th grade, Dara Pereira from the 10th grade, Denzel Chukwu from the 9th grade, and Drew Alice from the 12th grade. These kids gave just tremendous, honest, direct input, and you know, Principal Holcomb and his team was there, were there to hear it. You know, they're taking actions, action items right away, so I can't give you guys all the comments, but I kind of summarized. So I'm going to start with the good and then I'll go with the bad. So the good things that these kids had to say about Taunton High is they, they see that the hallways are less crowded, they see the efforts that the administration has put in and the security guards, so they, they feel like they're able to get to their classes a lot better than, than years before. They had so many great things to say about the College and Career Center, particularly our 12th graders, many of whom were like the first kids in their, their family to go to college. They, they said invaluable help for the College and Career Center, so really hats off to the guidance team and everybody that put that together. Really great comments for the PALS program, helping multilingual learners coming in in the 8th grade, giving them buddies that, you know, speak their same language, helping them acclimatize to Taunton High School. Great things. For the food, they were really happy with the grab and go meals. Now, this was something, the first meeting we had in the year, one of the things the kids had to say was, it was a ridiculous line coming in in the morning, nobody could get their breakfast because there's not enough time getting off the bus, getting breakfast, getting to class. So in response to that, the, the folks that are in charge of the food, they came up with the grab and go breakfasts, and now the kids are actually able to pop in, get their breakfast, get to class. So it's like direct action. The kids had something to say, the administrator reacted and fixed it. And then they saw, they, the really, the greatest things these kids had to say was the, the reset rooms. They had just like direct examples of students that, you know, were dysregulated, went to the reset rooms, it really helped them out, so like the, the kids really saw the, the impact of that, so I appreciated that. So now, the things that are not so great. While they acknowledged that there had been improvements in the bathrooms, you know, early in the year, the, the thing they had to say was, a lot of the bathrooms were locked and they couldn't get in there. It had improved, but it kind of seemed the downslide, because I guess we didn't have as many people, you know, proctoring the hallways and keeping kids in line, so it had gone back to being the hangout for kids vaping and, you know, not using the bathroom for what they're supposed to. So I think we need to up the ante on that. And then a consistent thing with the kids is that the food was just not good, that we've got room for improvement there. So I know there are action items to see, how can we review the quality of the food, see what we can do about it? They, they wanted to see more movement in their classes, you know, the, some of the kids mentioned they would like to see, could we have our classrooms outside? Could we move around the class rather than just sitting there listening to a teacher talk? Some kids were not quite happy with the new curriculums, the new math curriculum, the new science curriculum. They, they felt it was not teaching them the way they needed to be taught. Particularly, kids had problems with 80% of their grade being based on exams, so some of these kids would have a really poor exam and then they felt like there was no way for them to recover. You know, based on the conversations with the administration in that, in that meeting, that's not the intent of what we're trying to do. We want to give kids an opportunity to, to retake class, retake a test that they would fail, and you know, we don't want them, them hurting like that. And, and then one student mentioned they want better chairs because they had back pain. So I know that's a lot, but it's really important, like, this is the stuff that the kids are talking about. So I know Superintendent Cabral and the administration, they've already taken action items on these and, and what we told these kids, you can keep joining this, this group. I know Isaiah will be there, and they can see in September, when we have the first meeting, they're going to see the results of, of this first meeting, so. And that was just Taunton High School. We had Taunton Alternative High School as well. So at Taunton Alternative High School, we had Caleb Winters in the 10th grade, Patrick Reynolds in the 11th grade, France Hippolyte in the 11th grade, and DeBron Smith in the 12th grade. So these guys were awesome, they had, they had a lot to share. You know, really, they really loved Taunton Alternative High School, and all of these kids, they, Taunton High School wasn't quite for them for various reasons, and they feel really seen, and they know that all their teachers at Taunton Alternative High School are really invested in their, in their success, and they just love being there. So, you know, they love this place, it's less chaotic, their attendance had improved. Like, these are kids that were just straight up not going to school, and now that they're in a place where they feel like they fit in, they feel comfortable, they're going to school. It's, it's great. Best school I've ever attended, I get the work done here. They appreciate the smaller teacher-to-student ratio, that's very important to them. You know, we had kids that had previously, DeBron had attended school in Houston, and he loved it better than any of the schools he ever attended there. So, you know, it just, it just really hats off to Bert and his entire team there at Taunton Alternative High School. So that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Palowski.
Motion to accept the report. Mr. Palowski?
Second.
Second. Anything on discussion? Mr. Wendell, any discussion on that? Pretty accurate?
It takes 50 percent of everything. For the math position? Yeah. Math was a... Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have Curriculum and Subcommittee Chairman Santos.
Thank you, Dr. Demello. The meeting was called to order at 5:04:05 on Tuesday, May 21st, at Elizabeth Cole Elementary School. I, Mrs. Shavz, Mrs. Fagan, Superintendent Joel Cabral, Amy Moynihan, and Chris Barada were in attendance. The purpose of the meeting was to review the CIT report, specifically focusing on the therapeutic learning program report. The draft we were given during this meeting was a draft, a completed version is actually in our packet for today. While the Subcommittee was not provided a draft prior to the start of the meeting, we took the first 10 minutes of the, of the meeting to review the contents of the draft summary. Mrs. Moynihan focused her discussion first on the referral process, which is cited also in the final report, but she also focused on the two specific incidences that occurred over the past school year, which prompted this specific meeting. Regarding the incident that prompted Dr. Demello's recommendation, the Subcommittee reviewed the program. Once the incident occurred, the entire therapy team reconvened with the student and came together to include more supportive measures for the student to prevent further future deregulation. Mrs. Moynihan made it clear that the incidences, I, there was another incidence that happened in September, are not the norm for this program, and I think it's really important for what she had mentioned in this as well, for all of this to keep in mind, is that most behaviors are regularly regulated within the program with no issue. It is important to note that these students are on par with their peers when it comes to academics, they simply have trouble self-regulating behavior. It is also important to note that Chamberlain takes students from every elementary school, and as Ms. Moynihan pointed out, specific behaviors can be upsetting to others who may not have the necessary understanding and experience to understand what is happening with each student. However, this does not mean the program does not face specific problems, a lot of these are laid out in the, in the report, but she recognized some of the issues with curriculum consistency in each classroom, with some overuse of food-driven rewards and breaks. The recommendations laid out in the report address these issues. She also mentioned the trouble they face hiring teachers for the program, there's a lack of applicants. But as highlighted in the report, the plan is to expand the program to include four classrooms. Right now, there are three with 21 students per class, there is one teacher and two assistants. The plan is to use grant funding to hire this new teacher. Superintendent Cabral mentioned the importance of looking at more project-based learning, citing Boys Town as a reference. He also mentioned the possible need for more expert consultations to help educators within the program help with specific children. This aligns with the recommendation for ongoing professional development laid out in the current plan. Mrs. Shavz asked about the availability of data on past students that could inform future practices, in which Mrs. Moynihan stated that there was data that still needs to be assessed and reviewed. Mrs. Shavz also just suggested that it would be useful to month, to have monthly staff presentations for those at Chamberlain, so that everyone in the building is educated regarding the program, which may alleviate some issues of isolation or confusion. Superintendent Cabral assured us that the final report would be made available for all of us, which it is with this meeting, this of course will allow for more discussion. As far as new business, discussions for the next Subcommittee were discussed. Mrs. Shavz, prompted by questions of concerns of family members, was curious about the schedule in the three middle schools and whether they were all consistent or similar. Mr. Chris Barada informed the Subcommittee that he would provide us with relevant information, and this came up in your report about Mrs. Fagan's concerns about what came up as far as the math and, and science curriculum. So we've discussed, we, we also discussed that, and this came out in the last Subcommittee meeting, that the, the math department itself hadn't presented to the school committee in like 14 years, I think you had said. So therefore, there will be a forthcoming plan to invite Dr. Elizabeth Palowski to present the curriculum to the Subcommittee, and Superintendent Cabral even offered a visit to the classroom, so that the committee would be better able to see the curriculum being implemented in real time. The forthcoming meeting date has yet to be determined, but will be established as soon as possible. The meeting adjourned at 5:00 PM.
Thank you, Chair Santos.
Motion to accept the curriculum Subcommittee report.
Second.
All that. Were there recommendations that we need to also adopt or make a rec, for the record, by your committee, were there motions to accept?
Lauren, recommendations? Does your committee make any recommendations?
No, it was just forthcoming meetings, what we would like to discuss, there was no recommendations.
Thank you. Motion stands.
Seconded by?
Christine.
Mine stands too.
Mrs. Fagan? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Chair Santos. Next up, we have Finance and Law, and that's me, Chairman Demello. So first off, we had a use of facilities report. Mrs. Moynihan explained that the only organization on the list is paying full freight for rental, custodian, police, fire, and facility manager, that was received and placed on file unanimously. Next up, we had a facility dude report. Basically, as of fiscal year started July 1, 2023, there were 2,294 work orders. Of those, 77% were occupied by the school department in the amount of 1,781, so it's just an ongoing update of work orders and where we stand, that was also unanimously received and placed on file. Next up, we had the food service vendors. Let's see, where's my agenda here, so I don't screw up here? No, next up, we had the student activity request from Taunton High School, an amount of $24,607.50. Mrs. Shavz inquired about a transaction, the amount of $11,250, which was a reimbursement, and that was explained that that was ticket sales for the prom, and that was also received unanimously and placed on file. Next up, we had the cafeteria bid awards. We started out with groceries first, of the three bidders, Thurston, Cisco, and Gordon. It was recommended to award to Thurston Foods in the amount of $6,927.86, and that is basically a case shopper calculation, so it's not the full amount of the bid, it's how they shop and present the case and the quantities, and once again unanimously recommended to award to Thurston Foods. Next up, we had the milk. There were two bidders, Cape Dairy and Thompson, Thompson Food Service. Unfortunately, Thompson Food Service's bid was rejected because it did not include ice cream, and we can't have a studio without ice cream. So Mrs. Moynihan did check with the Inspector General, and it was a valid bid reject, so it was awarded to Cape Dairy in the amount of $277.59, and that's a unit cost, and they are also our current vendor. Once again, unanimously recommended to award the bid to Cape Dairy. Next up, we had the bread award. There were two bidders, Fantini and Calisi. The winner, bid award was for Fantini Bakery, which came out to $4.27, with an average per serving cost of 42 cents, 42.7 cents per average cost. Once again, voted unanimously to recommend the award of the bread bid to Fantini. That was the cafeteria bid awards.
Correct?
And last but not least, we had the bills payable in the amount, for FY '24, the amount of $2,439,715.53. There were a couple of questions, but I did request to be recorded as voting present on page 29, which relates to the amount to Pride Inc. in the amount of $13,340, which I serve on the Board of Directors and as co-treasurer, and that was amended and also unanimously accepted and voted in favor. And that concludes the report of Finance and Law.
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
My second.
Seconded by Ms. Santos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?[1653.72]
Next up, we have New Business.
Whoops, shut my mic off. New, yes, Mrs. Fagan.
Um, you don't want me to report out on the T E A? We can do that next time.
Uh, yeah, we'll do that next time.
Okay.
If you don't mind. Thank you so much. Uh, next up, we have New Business, Taunton High School Performing Arts Mural. Please see the enclosure, Superintendent.
So if you notice on the screen, I provided you with a little reminder, if you go back one. You have provided a little reminder of last year, that this committee supported a request from the Athletic Department to put a, put, to present an athletic mural. And to, to date, the athletic mural gets rave reviews from all the parents, caregivers, visitors to the school, to the, to the grounds. And a lot of superintendents have reached out, asking me how we did this, cause they want to emulate or replicate something similar in their school system. So I thought it would only be fitting to come to the committee, Ms. Moynihan, a slight pause. I thought it would only be fitting to come to the committee. As we continue this work, I would propose, or ask for the school committee, consider the approving, uh, eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars from the Uso Facility or the Rental Facility Revolving Account, which currently has a balance of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, to, uh, rep- replicate the rendering that you see here. This is, uh, the, the back of the theater of Taunton High School, so we'll continue the pattern of athletics and performing arts. We have a robust performing arts program. I can't speak enough about our students and how well they perform from the elementary school, actually, middle school and onto the high school. So I, I think eighteen thousand dollars would be a great way to show our respect and admiration for the performing arts program. So I, I would ask that the committee entertain, uh, this in the form of a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second on that.
Uh, Mister, on discussion, Mr. Viera?
Yeah, could, could we just put a number amount on it? Could we approve in the amount, uh, not to exceed the amount stated?
I think would be up to eighteen thousand dollars would probably be the proper motion.
I can add that to the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Miss, Miss Shaws?
Who designed the mural?
One of our former students. Uh, so this was done in conjunction with students' input, Mr. Bork, and also Philip Bork, who helped design the athletic mural.
Fabulous, yeah.
Ms. Santos?
Um, so I had that question. Um, but also you, it, it seems that you don't have an artist in mind yet.
Philip Bork would be the artist.
Oh, okay. So you're very, okay.
Great. So the motion made amended by Mrs. Fagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the Summer Schedule. Um, please see the memo from Superintendent Cabral. Looks like on July tenth, we had an opportunity to, uh, weigh in on the July tenth end of school year retreat. I think we're basically, is everybody signed on yet?
Uh, four members, sorry. So, uh, and I'll pass this around. Four members have indicated that they are available on the tenth. And the earliest we could start would be five P M.
Okay.
And I'll pass this around if anybody else wants to.
And we'll let Mr. Enos also, uh, know it's July tenth, if he's able to make it at, uh, five P M at the earliest.
Five P M.
And also, we have a meeting scheduled, scheduled for July seventeen, which will be a Finance and Law, followed by a Regular School Committee meeting. Then August seven, Finance and Law at five forty-five, followed by a Regular School Committee meeting at six. And August twenty-first, Finance and Law at five forty-five, followed by the Regular School Committee meeting at six P M. And superintendent's reporting his days out of office for scheduled vacation time. And some institutes, Executive Institute that he's attending, and an all admin administration retreat. Uh, superintendent, is that the same retreat that we as school committee members can come by and say hello?
Correct. Uh, actually, that's a great opportunity for school committee members to meet new administrators in districts. And we have about seventy total, and that is held off campus. So you are all welcome to attend either the eighth or the ninth, um, to attend either the professional development that's going on, or you're more than welcome to join us for lunch.
So.
Uh, to be determined. So I'll get you the site.
Yeah, so just point on your calendars, the eighth and ninth of August as a, uh, T B N, okay? And that's, uh, the Summer Schedule Memo. Any action on this, or just receiving, place on file? Place on file.
Motion to receive the Summer Schedule and place on file.
Second on that.
Second by Ms. Delora. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have the Community Impact Team Summary. See enclosure.
So it might be, um, it might be wise, uh, I can go through the document tonight, or might be wise to refer this to a committee of the whole, or refer this to a future meeting where we don't have a lot of agenda items, that we can dive into this. So I, instead of scheduling.
Move that.
So instead of scheduling a presentation, we will, this will be the presentation, and we will, we'll, we'll discuss it.
So the motion by Mr. Laura is to.
Move it to the appropriate next.
To a s, a Committee of the Whole meeting.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
All right. Is there a second?
Could, could we put a date sign?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Mrs. Fagan seconded. On discussion, Mr. Viera?
Could we put a date sign? Is there a specific meeting that you think it would be appropriate?
Sorry, we could do it on the July seventeenth meeting.
Yes.
July seventeenth.
All good, July seventeen. So motion is on the floor, seconded for July seventeenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have the, uh, East Taunton Elementary Dedication, scheduled for June fourteen, twenty twenty-four at ten A M. Uh, as you, some of you are on social media. It's been very much advertised, uh, by the T A V V A organization, which I'm an associate member of, inviting the general public, which of course, everyone's invited, to the East Taunton Elementary School at ten A M on June fourteenth. Mr. Viera? Oh, I, I went over the action item. Sorry, we'll revert back to item two. Thank you, thank you so much. So please, if you can make it, it'd be, it's gonna be a wonderful affair. Uh, it's indoor, outdoor? Is that correct, Mr. Cabral?
We'll be prepared in the event of inclement weather.
Great, wonderful. So that's just for, uh, your notice. And we'll revert back to item two, the Action Item Update. Any comments on that?
Uh, the only thing I would say is I, I believe we could take the four, six, two, two item about the preschool expansion. We have added the sixth grade here at Pole. Uh, would it be appropriate to remove that? Uh, we can keep the culinary kitchen items on. The awning, that work is scheduled to commence soon, so that can be, that can remain on. Twelve, seven, twenty-two can remain. One, four, twenty-three can remain. Uh, will soon be taken off the East Taun dedication, so that can come off at the next meeting. And I re, and I believe the next two items, we'll probably do, Mr. Viera, to connect and schedule a long-range planning meeting. So I'll connect with you offline to schedule something in the future. And I believe, uh, everything else can stay on.
So you want to remove what, Superintendent? I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't have my.
Sorry, the first one. It would be appropriate to remove the first item, cause that was added back in January twenty-four.
Everybody okay with that, removing item one dated four, six, twenty-two?
Mo- motion to remove, uh, reference preschool expansion full-day program for four-year-olds to elementary Subcommittee.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that motion.
Motion to remove, refer preschool expansion full-day programs, four-year-olds to elementary school Subcommittee.
Okay, so second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Uh, next up, we have the School Committee Year End Retreat Discussion, which we just basically talked about. So please let the superintendent know. Uh, before we conclude, I just want to let the public at home know that we will be before the City Council on June eleventh. We're all invited as school committee members. Uh, we will be with the leadership team, Superintendent Cabral, Mrs. Moynihan, and whoever he invites. So please put that on your calendar. And for the public at home, they noticed that we're wearing these wonderful uniforms, uh, cheering on our boys' baseball team. I think they're probably over by now, but the girls have just started at seven o'clock, so good luck to both those teams. Basically, good luck. One more meeting left, yes. And, uh, any press in the audience? I see no press. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.